Everyone to the City Council Meeting for June twenty fourth. We're gonna start off with a moment of silence followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Portcom?
Here.
Artino?
Here.
Klaus?
Here.
Here.
Dyke? Reeves?
Here.
Hegi?
Mr. Mayor.
Class.
I'm gonna make a motion to excuse Mr. Dyke and Mr. Hegi from tonight's meeting.
Question on the motion? Roll call.
Klaus?
Yes.
Cap?
Yes.
Reeves?
Yes.
Portcom?
Yes.
Artino?
Yes.
Very good. We have no minutes. Audience comments, citizens may address their concerns. The City Council, please state your name and address for the recorded journal and keep it to a three-minute time limit.
My name is Mike Riggle. I live at two twenty-four Williams Street apartment K. I noticed a section of sidewalk has been torn up a month ago. Why they have put down a whole new section on the north side of Ohio Street? I don't know, north side of South Street between Williams and Center.
North side of South Street. Between Williams and Center. Okay. Find out. I don't know anything about it, but we'll find out. It's still tore up?
It was tore up and it was when the cement companies ever gonna put down the concrete.
Could be somebody on our...
Our list, yeah.
They had a whole stretch to do, but they're doing... Neighbors are getting together and doing them all at the same time, taking...
Okay.
Takes it between where Patrick lives and whatever his next door neighbor is.
We will check on that. Okay.
We got, on that same note, we got the one done on eight oh five Main Street and Cleveland Road, right? Our property across from...
Oh, yeah.
PB. I mean, that was out for a while, but I think that's done, right?
Yeah. And we had to wait on the way a little bit.
Yeah.
In the old business, new business. We have Resolution number forty-five dash twenty twenty-five.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Artino?
I move to waive the three reading rule and place Resolution number forty-one dash twenty twenty-five on its first reading.
Questions on the...
Forty-five.
Forty-five.
Yeah, number forty-five.
Questions on the three reading? Roll call.
Artino?
Yes.
Klaus?
Yes.
Cap?
Yes.
Reeves?
Yes.
Portcom?
Yes.
Very good, Mr. Schrader.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is Resolution number forty-five dash two zero two five. A resolution authorizing the city manager to accept the proposal and enter into an agreement with DLZ Ohio Inc. for professional construction inspection, management, administration, and materials testing services relating to the Cleveland Road East Sidewalk Extension Project. ERI-six-eighteen-point-eight-eight sidewalk, PID number one-one-seven-two-four-zero, in the amount of eighty thousand four hundred twelve dollars.
Mr. Hamilton?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And this is the Construction Inspection Construction Administration for the Cleveland Road East Sidewalk Project. Um, this is the last piece to slide into place so we can get this project scheduled. Um, we put a RFQ out for this project and also for the crossing on Route thirteen. Um, DLZ were our only respondent. Um, we still went through, we scored on, we checked references, they come highly recommended. Um, the total for this would be eighty thousand four hundred and twelve. I'd just like to remind council this project is fully funded with grant funding. Um, so we're excited about that.
So, once this is approved, we already got the contractor, right? And then, do we have any idea when they might start? I know they were waiting on this.
Um, it will be, at this point, it will be between our inspection team and the, um, construction team to figure their schedules out. It will be latest, this late summer done. And it'll probably run for, um, probably two months. So, it'll definitely be done and completed by fall.
I mean, we're looking at starting sometime probably in August then?
Uh, hopefully before that.
Okay.
But, yeah, August, worst case, hopefully.
All right. Any other questions for Mr. Hamilton? Final adoption.
Artino?
Yes.
Klaus?
Yes.
Cap?
Yes.
Reeves?
Yes.
Portcom?
Yes.
Next, we have Resolution number forty-six dash twenty twenty-five.
Mr. Mayor?
Portcom.
I move to waive the three reading rule and to place Resolution number forty-six dash twenty twenty-five on its first reading.
Uh, questions on the three reading? Roll call.
Portcom?
Yes.
Artino?
Yes.
Klaus?
Yes.
Cap?
Yes.
Reeves?
Good, Mr. Schrader.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, this is Resolution number forty-six dash two zero two five. A resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into a management and administrative services agreement on behalf of the city of Huron, Ohio, with Huron Township, Ohio, relating to Scott Cemetery, formerly known as the Scott Union Cemetery, located in Myland Township, Ohio, comprised of Erie County, Ohio Permanent Parcel Numbers. Five zero dash zero zero three six seven point zero zero one, five zero dash six three zero one three point zero zero zero, five zero dash six three zero one two point zero zero zero, five zero, six three zero one four point zero zero zero, and five zero dash six three zero one five point zero zero zero, effective July fifteen, two thousand twenty-five.
July...
Probably six, because of all...
Yeah, July first is what I have.
We changed that date. July fifteen.
July fifteen. Okay, and then, you read one as six-three, and it should be five-three.
I'm guessing that was a typo, probably. Because all the rest of them are six-three?
Yeah, on our paper, we have...
On our paper, it says five-three, that's weird.
Probably.
We have five zero dash five three zero one two.
It's the, uh, third one?
Yeah, I have six-three zero one.
Okay. So, it's a phrase that's type one.
I do too in the, in the updated one.
You have six-three or five?
Six-three.
Six-three.
Yeah, it's probably six-three, because all the rest of them are six-three.
Yeah.
I wonder if you pulled from the original packet and not the updated?
There was a...
I just have it on this piece, paper that...
It was on the agenda.
On the agenda.
On the agenda is where it was.
Oh, yeah, it says six-three in the packet.
I, that, we were just doing this to let you know that we're actually paying attention?
Yes. Thank you for reading.
I was sleeping.
All right, Mr. Hamilton?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And so, just as a reminder, um, Scott Cemetery is run and controlled by Cemetery Board. Um, it is owned by the city, is managed by the township, and it's in Myland Township. More confusing you cannot get. Um, the township approached us and they asked to simplify things. How did we feel about disbanding the Cemetery Board, um, leaving the township, fully controlling the day-to-day operations of the cemetery? Um, and we would retain ownership of the cemetery. We, as staff, don't see a problem with that. It would simplify things, it would save on audit costs. Um, there, there's a lot of other nuances that roll into this. Um, so, we came up with the idea of disbanding the Cemetery Board, um, doing a master service agreement for the township to fully run and maintain the cemetery. The, the guts of the agreement are, are written in a way that fully defines their roles and responsibilities while also protecting the city. Um, we would document the closing, um, fund balance for the cemetery in the agreement. And so, if in the future, the township decides they don't want to run it anymore, that amount of money will come back to the city with interest. So, if it's ten years down the line, we'd get ten years' interest. Um, the cemetery would be fully maintained at the cost of the township. That includes capital costs. There are capital costs coming, um, in the Scott Cemetery for museums, for expanding the burial sites, putting in roads, maintaining the roads. This removes the city's responsibility for having to pay those capital costs along, um, with the township. The agreement would be for a minimum of five years. There would be no expiration date on this agreement, but what we don't want to do is enter into an agreement like this and then just have it not work after a year and revert back to where we were. So, the township would be committed to do this for at least five years, but in perpetuity for all intents and purposes, unless the city decides they're not doing it properly? Or the township decides that it, it's really not worth them doing it anymore? And the city residents will always be guaranteed the same rate as the township residents. That, that's one of the most important things for us, is, then, this is city property, so whatever the township residents gets charged, the city residents will also be charged. Um, there is no cost to the city for this agreement. It actually relieves of us of audit costs and we, we will still have oversight of the cemetery. We'll still have oversight and they'll report back to us twice a year on how it's operating, but they, they will take full control of all operating costs and operating, um, duties of the cemetery. Um, so with that, happy to take any questions, concerns?
Uh, I think you just said it at the end of your statement here, there, but I just wanted to make it clear that, um, or and confirm with you, the oversight that we have or ability to audit whatever we want is twice a year. Is that they have to provide statements essentially to us twice a year?
Do you, Mr. Mayor?
That's in the agreement?
Yeah, they, they will just, they, they will send it unupdated. They, they won't maintain the same cemetery fund as it stands right now. They will roll that into their main cemetery operating fund, but yes, they'll report, report back to us twice a year on how, how it's running.
Thank you.
Um, I don't know if it's...
Right.
You or, uh, William? Did you guys? John had told me the other day that... Was the date changed? Did John get a hold of you guys about a date?
Yes.
Yeah, I was gonna, I was gonna announce that.
Okay, because there was a problem with the dates.
Yeah, um, the Cemetery Board will actually meet, I believe, before the Fourth of July.
After, after the Fourth of July? And that's, that's why it's not...
The fifteenth, huh?
That's why it's not July first, it's July fifteenth.
He was making, he, he had mentioned the thirtieth, but I saw it was changed here, so I figured he got a hold of somebody. Somebody can't get you guys together.
Yeah.
That's what I got. Okay. Any other questions? Comments? Final adoption.
Portcom?
Yes.
Artino?
Yes.
Klaus?
Yes.
Cap?
Yes.
Reeves?
Yes.
Very good. Next on the agenda, entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor?
Artino?
I'd like to make a motion to set a public hearing for August twelfth, twenty twenty-five at six thirty PM, immediately preceding the regular council meeting, on the rezoning application of OJD Holdings LLC. To rezone vacant property located on River Road, Erie County, Ohio, permanent parcel number four-two dash zero one seven two zero point zero zero zero, and parcel number four-two dash zero one seven two zero point zero zero one, and parcel number forty-two dash zero one seven one nine point zero zero, from its current one, uh, I-two, General Industry District to B-three, General Business District. You're going after Todd's job here, ain't you?
Any questions on the motion? Roll call.
Artino?
Yes.
Klaus?
Yes.
Cap?
Yes.
Reeves?
Yes.
Portcom?
Yes.
Good. Next, we'll entertain another motion.
I guess. Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Artino?
I'd like to make a motion to set a public hearing for August twelfth, twenty twenty-five at six thirty PM, immediately preceding the regular council meeting pursuant to Section Number eleven thirty-nine point zero six relating to the general development concept plan for the con, former ConAgra parcel. EPN forty-two dash sixty-one two seven zero point zero zero one.
Any questions on that motion? Final adoption.
Artino?
Yes.
Klaus?
Yes.
Cap?
Yes.
Reeves?
Yes.
Portcom?
Yes.
Very good. Up to the city manager's discussion.
I made a really long one to make up for time. No.
We couldn't have our record.
Hey, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, ConAgra Development is, the, the public meeting was just set. A second public hearing was held on June eighteenth, twenty twenty-five before the Planning Commission to review landscape, lighting, green space, and elevations. The recommendation was to approve these plans via the Planning Commission and passed on to, um, council for consideration. Um, the public hearing was set tonight for August twelfth. That public hearing will take place and then council will get to vote on that plan. Um, the rezoning for OJD Holdings, um, for the River Road property from I-one to B-three had a public hearing at Planning Commission. Planning passed that one on to council also. That public hearing was also set tonight for August twelfth. Um, it's River Fest time again. Um, the multi-day event features lively mix of family-friendly activities, parade, live music, food, vendors, carnival rides, craft booths, and firework display on the river. This tradition has spanned decades. River Fest brings residents, both current and past, together with a vibrant celebration of local culture, entertainment, and small-time charm. So, save the date, it's Friday, July eleventh, from five-thirty to fireworks at ten fifteen, and Saturday, July twelfth, from eight-thirty AM, which is the river run five K relay and fun run, to ten PM. The Huron Lions Club River Fest Parade will take place on the Saturday, July twelfth, at eleven AM, so please come out and support all our local vendors and have some fun. Um, Safety Services, um, Police Department hired Officer Logan Demuth as a full-time police officer, starting June twenty-second, twenty twenty-five. Officer Demuth has seven years experience in full-time police officer, replacing Ian Foose, who resigned in September, twenty twenty-four. And Police Department also hired Cadet Jacob Eck as a full-time employee, starting June twenty-third, twenty twenty-five. He is expected to graduate the academy September first. Um, Cadet Eck will be replacing an anticipated retirement this fall. Um, there's a public hearing, um, for the twenty-twenty-six tax budget, um, set for July eighth, meeting here in the council chamber at six-thirty. It will be part of the regular council meeting. Anyone who wants to come along and have some fun, welcome to join us. And this is a reminder of the electric aggregation. The city aggregation program expires in July. Due to market conditions, we were unable to provide meaningful aggregation savings. Um, we bid on this, so the city will be stepping away from the aggregation program. We will, as always, keep an eye on the market. We can re-enter the aggregation program anytime. Um, so, when the market allows and can provide us some meaningful savings, we will re-enter aggregation and we'll let the residents know we've done so. Um, to get us through to when we can do that, we suggest residents, um, visit the Energy Choice Apples-to-Apples site, um, online, and they can shop their own aggregation programs there. Um, they, they can see some small savings there, but they'll see the same as we did, there wasn't a whole load of savings. As soon as we can bring savings for our residents, we will re-enter and we will let everybody. Um, on to upcoming meetings. Um, under Safety Services, there's one other thing I wanted to comment on. Um, our e-scooter, e-bike situation. Um, we are continuing to work through the nuances of, um, controlling these ever faster devices on our sidewalks and on our roads. Um, I, as we work through it myself, Chief, and SSEG, we will come back to council at some point, probably early July, for a quick work session on this. Um, I believe the work session will be more about where we stand. Um, there's not a whole load of options, but we will present any options that we can bring to the table. And then, on to our upcoming meetings. We have the public hearing on the tax budget on July eighth, six-thirty in the council chamber. We have a council meeting the same night, July eighth, at six-thirty in the council chambers. BZA meeting on Monday, July fourteenth, at five-thirty in the council chambers. We have another Planning Commission meeting, July sixteenth, at five P M, in the council chambers. And there is a second council meeting on Tuesday, July twenty-second, at six-thirty in the council. With that, happy to take any questions.
Littlecomb.
Um, I saw a post on Talk Here and About, that people were surprised about the aggregation. And I know we posted it on Facebook back in May, cause I found the post and shared that. But, uh, could we maybe post that again? So that, and, uh, that might have been something that probably could have gone in that mail or that we just sent out, you know, for future reference, something like that, that's gonna affect everyone. Cause I looked in that and that, it wasn't in there, so. But, uh, yeah, if you could at least post it again on Facebook to, cause I'm sure a lot of people don't see all that stuff, so.
Yeah, I've got, and I, I talked to city manager, I've gotten phone calls, text messages, and face-to-face, it's people that aren't extraordinarily happy, but there's nothing we can do about it because it's not worth the, uh, time right now. Again, yeah, and on that, I think on that posting, just go ahead and put in those, couple of those websites. I explained about the websites, but some of them. I had to check those. I think what happened is, from what I heard, and I don't know if I got one or not, but Ohio, that's in San Antonio.
I already got one.
Rates were gonna go up July.
Yeah.
Kind of fitting, I guess.
Yeah, and a lot of people were saying that they've only been estimated for many months in a row, so they're expecting to get socked when that happens.
Yeah, so, um, but I just wanna make sure that, you know, that, uh, like city manager said, we're continuing looking for options through the aggregation program. And if something does come up, we can take care of switching over, just like we normally did. I also wanna reiterate what you also said, and as far as e-bikes, um, still getting some complaints. Yes, it's not a easy choice to find out what, how to do that. I know he's been working on it too, and there's some disagreements between some ordinances that are going back and forth, and it's hard to, uh, hard to police that. I mean, I, I, and I, I tell people, I said, if we had a hundred police officers that we could set at every corner, it would be, work out great. But we can't do that, so we can't do that for vehicles. But we are actively looking into it and trying to come up with a solution. And city manager said we are gonna sit down and discuss that and, and at least, hopefully we'll have some options that we can go through and present to the council. Well, if there's nothing else for, uh, Mr. Hamilton?
I just, one quick, on the e-bike thing, um, we did not, I know we talked. I, I know we talked about potentially posting some stuff, like on Facebook or on social media, but did, we probably, I'm assuming we haven't. I didn't, I didn't notice anything, since we don't have any thing to officially post, correct?
And through you, Mr. Mayor, no, we haven't. Um, we are working through the current ordinances. Um, there's a couple of conflicting sections in there. Uh, we wanna make sure that we're on a hundred percent clear footing. Um, before we start posting stuff on there. To put out bad information is worse than putting out no information. So once we work through that, we're, we're gonna start doing some re-education, um, things. I think that'd be good coming out after the work session. Um, because we'll come with where we stand just now. We'll come with how we think, we'll show how it's written currently, how, how enforceable it is as it's written. And we can kinda talk through some of the nuances and then we can kinda full-court press it and push it out.
Yeah, cause I have a feeling that some of the parents are buying their kids these thousand-dollar e-bikes that go thirty mile an hour or whatever, don't see what they're doing when they're running around in a couple neighborhoods next door. Group of them and they're, you know, going the wrong way and going, riding two and three on a bike and someone, someone's gonna get hurt. Thank you for all you guys' efforts and and I agree, we need to do it right, obviously.
Anything else for Mr. Hamilton? All right, mayor's discussion, um, just again, already said what I was gonna say, um, the aggregation, we are looking into that, e-bikes, we are looking into that. I want to also, I can add, spoke to Mr. Artino earlier before the meeting, um, was on the Planning Commission, and I just wanna it was the Planning Commission because things are getting done. People are happy, things are moving along like they're supposed to. So please pass that on to the other board members. It's going well. Other than that, thank you, Mr. Regal, for showing up. They put you on payroll as an inspector, so. And, uh, and, uh, e-bikes, again, I have a I'm trying to stay calm on the e-bike thing because, and I think Mr. Artino and, right, Mr. Klaus too, because they're a little older. It, it's just different than what it used to be, how things are handled and it just time now, so, um, luckily we got Chief working on it and that's better than myself, so. There's so many places I could go with that comment right there, so. All right, other than that, I have nothing else. I wanna thank the staff and everybody else. Oh, uh, heads up, um, our finance director, it will be starting on June thirtieth, I believe, yes, Isaac Phillips, so, uh, that's next Monday, I believe. Yeah, so if you get a chance, stop in, say hi, give him kudos, so, very good. Moving on, for the good of your, the order, Mr. Reeves.
Uh, nothing really, just my six-year-old really likes his e-bikes, so, thank you.
Don't mess with e-bikes.
Take a note there, chief.
Gateway, gateway.
Out of Inchaska.
Yeah. Mr. Klaus?
Nothing, uh, really, uh, everybody, um, we won't be back before the Fourth of July, so enjoy your Fourth of July holidays, uh, be safe. Um, it's gonna get crazy out there for Chief and his team for, uh, hopefully it's not quite this hot, but you guys gotta run around in those black uniforms. It gets a little I'll be breaking out the shorts, I'm sure, so. But, um, you know, everybody, uh, be safe and have fun and over the, uh, Fourth of July holiday. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Very good. Mr. Artino?
Uh, just the same, happy Fourth of July, everybody be safe.
Littlecomb.
Thank you, staff, for your hard work. Uh, welcome to Officers Demuth and Eck. Takeaways from the last school board meeting, which was last night. Um, they agreed to purchase a subscription to, uh, Magic A I, um, for use by students and the staff. They will be replacing the roof for the workshop at the bus garage. The assistant coach, Matt Smith, he will be the new girls' head basketball coach, and they hired alumni Sarah Kleber as the new preschool teacher. And then they announced that Roger Blevins was awarded the honor of being named State Biology Educator of the Year, so congratulations to him. And then outgoing booster president, Amy Springer, gave the board her final report. And, uh, for somebody who's helped out with the football for many years now, I've witnessed her dedication to the boosters and, uh, her support of the student athletes firsthand, and, uh, that she's left some big shoes to fill. And I thank her for her fifteen years of service. And, uh, like was led into earlier with our, uh, resolution forty-six twenty-two-five, there will be a special meeting of the Scott Union Cemetery Board to take action, um, which what was covered tonight, um, on July seventh at five P M, so I hope to see y'all there.
Could be your last meeting.
It could be the last meeting, yeah. Some boat basin events coming up. We have the Huron Rotary Festival all day this Saturday, June twenty-eighth. And we have Red, White, and Blues Bang, July fifth, six P M, with fireworks at ten-fifteen. Please come out and support our local events, program, student athletes, Happy Independence Day, and Go Tigers.
Very good, thank you. And with that, I will entertain a motion for adjournment.
Mr. Mayor?
Littlecomb.
I move that we adjourn tonight's meeting.
Roll call, please.
Littlecomb?
Yes.
Artino?
Yes.
Klaus?
Yes.
Cap?
Yes.
Reeves?
Yes.